I'm going to start that sentence again. We will now turn, as a Clark County Council, to a work session regarding Public Participation Plan for the 2025 Periodic Comprehensive Plan Update. And with that, to make the introduction, would that be Kathleen or Oliver Orjako?
I can certainly introduce Oliver. So Oliver Orjako is the Director of Community Planning. And Jackie Kemp, I believe, is also joining us this morning, who also works in community planning.
Yes, good morning, Madam Chair and Councillors, and good morning Kathleen. I will be giving the first half of the presentation, and then I will turn it over to Jackie Kemp. And both of us will be here to answer questions that Councillors may have. The presentation today, I'll go to the next slide. The presentation today, this is an outline of our presentation. We'll briefly cover Clark County's comprehensive plan, providing you an overview of planning in Clark County to the best we can. Then we'll get into the Public Participation Plan, our preliminary timeline, and then the anticipated next steps, next slides. Councillors, this map is very, very difficult to see, but I believe that this map is in the boardroom, hanging on, in the room there, on the wall, in the conference room, on the sixth floor. At some time in the future, we'll have an opportunity to go in depth about the land use. But this is the land use map of the county. And to the left is the comprehensive plan from 2015 to 2035. And to the right is the zoning map. It will be very difficult for me to go over the legends, but I'll be more than willing to have a conversation with the council at some point in the future. You can see that there are some areas that are wide out. Those are what I may call city limits. If you go from east to west and then to the north, the rural area to the bottom, if you scroll the map a little bit up, is the area that is in the gorge, that part of the gorge that is in Clark County. That's what that rural area to the southeast shows. Then as you march from east to west is Washugo, Camas, Vancouver, then in the middle is Barrow Ground. We don't typically show the city's land use map on our county map because we don't have land use jurisdictions. Anyone calling us, we can look that up on our map online and then direct them to call the appropriate city to get an idea of what their property is zone and what is allowed. We don't have that access to that. So, next slide. Talking about the comprehensive planning under the Growth Management Act in Clark County, what I would say is that the first comprehensive plan to comply with the Growth Management Act in Clark County was first adopted in 1994. And the plan itself is a long-range policy guide to manage growth and development over a 20-year period in Clark County. There have been subsequent amendments to the plan since he was adopted in 94, and I will go over that. When I talk about the Growth Management Act, as I stated, that was passed in 1990 and codified in Revised Code of Washington as 36.70A. And 130 of that codification requires jurisdictions to periodically review and update, if necessary, their plan and development regulations to bring them up to date with changes in state law, changes in land use, if any, and changes in population and, you know, growth projections. The population growth, the population forecast is provided to us by the State Office of Financial Management, and we are required by law to use that population estimate from the state. The state do not provide us employment. We work locally with Employment Security Department to generate potential new jobs associated with the growth. And I will get into that at some point. Then we're also required to look at any changes in law relating to housing. Next slide. In addition to the map that I shared with the council in one of the slides, the plan document is more than 300 pages in total. And we have chapters in the plan document. And the chapters are also, in some cases, looked as elements. There are some elements that are required by statute that our plan must have. For example, land use element, housing, capital facilities element, utilities, rural element, transportation, economic development, parks and recreation, shoreline chapter. We have also annexation chapter. There are some chapters that are optional. They are not required by the statute. For example, we have a school chapter, working with all the nine school districts in the county. We develop a school chapter to find a way for the county to support school issues. We also have historical preservation section or chapter. As you know, we are required, or we are the department that oversees the Clark County Historical Preservation Commission. We also have a community design. Some of these optional elements are not required by the statute. Next slide. Councillors, this is, again, since the passage of the Growth Management Act in 1990, as I stated earlier, the first comprehensive growth plan to comply with that act was passed in 1994. And that was for a period of 20 years, from 1994 to 2014. That plan was secondly updated in 2004, to go from 2004 to 2024. I won't go into details, but we did provide you issue paper one, which I will encourage all the Councillors to read. In that, you will find that after the passage of the, after the update in 2004, as was in 94, as was in '07, as was in 2016, each time we have done this work, it has been challenged. So the '04 plan was challenged, and the settlement of that resulted in the Councillors or the board at the time reopening the plan again. However, part of that agreement was not to change the end year. So the plan that was updated in 2007 also says 2004 to 2024. Just want to make that observation. Then following that update in 2007, the plan was again updated in 2016, from 2015 to 2035. That is the current plan that we are operating under. And the next one, which is the one we are now having conversation about to start, that we have the kickoff on January 19th, is required under RCWU 36.70A 130, Section 5B. That requires Clark County, among other counties, to update our plan, and that plan is due on or before June 30, 2025. The next update, as I am showing on this slide, will go from 2025 to 2045. And thereafter, as you can see, from '94, '04, '07, 2016, that's when the statute requires that we update every eight years. Now, the legislature have changed that eight years to 10 years. So after this completion from '25 to, that the plan that is due in June 2025, the next one will be due in 2030, sometime in 2020. 10 years is the new statute requirements. The map on the right here is just briefly to show the council. If you were to enlarge it, but if you don't, that's okay. The black swiggly line is the boundary that was adopted, the urban growth boundary that was adopted in 1994. The areas in yellow are the areas that was added to the urban growth boundary in the 2004 update. And then the, what I may call light brown, are the areas added to the urban growth boundary in the 2007 plan update. Some of you have hear me say that the 2007 was the most expansive UGA boundary in the history of Clark County. And when compared to other counties in the state, Clark County had the most largest expansion of urban growth boundary in the 2007 effort. Since then, you can see that in the 2016 update, there was the cities of Ridgefield and La Center, as well as Barrow Ground, expanded their boundary. Barrow Ground area that was expanded in the 2016 effort was later removed as a result of an appeal. The case of, in the case of Ridgefield and La Center, those areas were annexed prior to the Growth Board having a say or the court ruling on that. So because those areas were annexed, when we went to the court, both the appeals court and even the Washington State Supreme Court did not take the case, asserting that the annexation has made the issue mute. So let's go to the next slide. Councillors, this slide here is, as I stated, we are required to, it says here, every county and the city in the state is required to review and, if needed, revise its comprehensive land use plan and development regulations to ensure compliance with the Growth Management Act. And that is codified in RCWU 36.70A 130 sub A, a sub item one. As I stated, Clark County, along with other counties, by statute, RCWU 36.70A 130, Section 5B, requires that our plan be completed and adopted by council on or before June 30, 2025. The map that I have here on the right shows you all the 39 counties in the state and when their own periodic review is due. The counties here in blue, which I will not go, you can read it on your own, but it is Snohomish, King County, Pierce, and Kitsap. Their plan is due, or are due December 31st, next year, 2024. You can see where Clark County is. You can go from north, see the color, Clark County, to the south, starting from Watkins, Skagit. And then as you come through the west, Glarlem, Jefferson, Mason, and Thurston County, and Lewis County, plus Clark County. Our plan is due again on or before June 30, 2025. You can see the other counties that their plan are due in '26 and also in 2027. Some of the counties that are starred, if you were to ask, why are they starred? Not all the 39 counties in the state are what we call fully planning under the Growth Management Act. Some of these counties that are starred, Oconagon County, Ferry, Adams, Lincoln, some of these counties are required only to complete critical area ordinances. Some other counties are required to designate mineral resource, agricultural, and forest resource. Those are the only areas that these counties that are starred are required to plan for. Some of them are not what I may call buildable lands counties. We, Clark County, is required to fully plan under the Growth Management Act, and I can go into details what that means. We are also a buildable lands county. We are required to do the buildable lands report, which this council approved, and we submitted to the state last year in June. Let's go to the next slide. I will stop here and see if council has questions for me before I turn it over to Jackie.
Madam Chair, I've got a couple of questions before we actually get into the participation plan.
Councillor May Vaji?
Thank you. Thanks, Oliver. So my concern always is how do we become nimble? You know, we've had instances where, you know, from prior comprehensive plans, we had commercial zoning in place and never attracted any commercial activity. We had people take care of the tax holiday or permitting impact fee holiday way back when to put in commercial, and we still have areas where they never put it in. We heard this in great measure when we discussed the 179th, because I really would have liked to have seen, well, we know what the neighborhoods are going to be built, and we've got some commercial zoning, but what's coming in commercially? And the answer was always, well, they won't come in until after the rooftops are in place. So we've had instances where we guessed, I do great intellectual endeavor, where we wanted to have commercial in place, and it never materialized. I'll use the rail dependent issue here. You know, 2016 was in advance of the legislation that allowed some exception to the Growth Management Plan on putting industrial areas out into, beyond the urban growth boundary. So it wasn't planned for. And then it came in, it was passed, signed by the governor. And pretty much, I think we ultimately, as a council, approved like 300 acres. And now we're going through the turmoil of a concrete plant to go from industrial to industrial rail. So there wasn't political will on the part of the council to move forward since 2017. But now we want to. So my question is, how do we, how are we nimble enough? How can we adjust to the reality on the ground or the reality we would like to see on the ground? And going back to the rail dependent, I mean, I'd like, right now, I'd like to see a GIS map of all the adjacent parcels that may be available for industry, for jobs, for family wage jobs, so people can stop commuting to Portland. So before we get into the participation plan, how nimble, because I haven't seen us be very nimble so far, at least in my very short experience the last four years.
And before Oliver answers that question, I just want to remind council that there is going to be a work session, I believe, on March 1 regarding the freight rail dependent use, in which staff will describe what has happened, what the bill, how it was implemented, or not implemented, but what was actually adopted, what the staff has done, the county has done up to that point, and then we'll be looking.
And I look forward to that. And I just use that as one example. But we've had instances of going and revisiting commercial zones to go back to mixed use or to convert to residential. So let's just focus on that. Once we've done the zoning and the comprehensive plan, how do we change it to adjust to realities on the ground? True thing.
Thank you, councillor, and thank you, county manager. We have the work session coming up. Councillor, I think you asked a very loaded question. When we put out a vision for a community, it's often, it doesn't say that when we have new information and there are changes that we will not entertain amendment to our land use. This is a 20-year framework, if you will, and community decision. From where I, as your planning director, the community vision hasn't changed significantly. What we hear is that, yes, some of these areas have been planned for, land for jobs. We hear that, whether it's from CREDC or others, that we need land for jobs. And the community makes a community effort to balance housing and jobs. Councillor, I think you know very well that it takes time for commercial and industrial development to occur. And it also requires that those areas be properly designated and for the community to have patience for that to occur. Recently, we have seen, whether it's because of the COVID, a change in what is happening or how we buy and purchase things. There were no Amazon five, 10 years ago. So retail is changing, but we also have to adapt. The significant number of Clark County residents crossing across the river to work every day, it's a policy decision that the community will have to make on how do we reverse that commute. You can zone a property for industrial or commercial and then change it, thinking that that will occur. That's my response to you. How do we become nimble? Where we see the need for a change, we will come before you and support that change. Where we don't think that change, where we see that change being premature, we will come to you, the planning commission and council, and tell you that that change is premature. Secondly, it requires infrastructure investment. You cannot, and this is Oliver theorizing or just editorizing now, you cannot put a 12-inch man line and expect an industrial user, who wants potentially 24 or 50-inch man line to provide 500 gallons of water per minute. 12-inch man line designed for residential development is not going to make that happen. And I take an exception to the 179. The land use out there was made in 2007. You take the Ridgefield Junction. I was here when the land use decision was made at the Ridgefield Junction. I can tell you that folks in Ridgefield, particularly the port of Ridgefield, before Brent Guerin left, they have been very patient, and they have made significant improvement at that interchange. And today, it is gradually happening in Ridgefield. Before, people were not touching land in Ridgefield. But because of that investment, folks are now moving. They have a store that they didn't have before. Costco is moving out there. So you have to find a way to balance, you know, what is happening in your community. So that's how we can be nimble. You cannot be changing the land use because someone asks you to.
Chair?
Yes, councillor.
Thank you. Thank you, Oliver. I appreciate your historic perspective. You know, looking at that map and being a farmer, it's disheartening to see how much agricultural land has been lost. And I think important in looking forward in planning is to look back and evaluate what's happened in the past. And I think getting that perspective from the public as well. But one specific thing that happened in 2016 that I'd like to know more about is that allowing cluster development on forest and ag land. And I'd really like to understand, you know, if the remainder lot, what has happened with those remainder lots? If they're still in agriculture, if they're, you know, and how much agricultural land really was lost because of the cluster development? And if the clustering occurred on land less suitable for agriculture? So that's one specific thing. But I really would like to get a better understanding. I think it'd be good for the community to understand what's been going on in terms of the loss of agricultural land. And just one more thing I'd like to comment on. As I was looking through some of the comments we've received so far on the Public Participation Plan, some very thoughtful comments. But Chad Aiken from the City of Vancouver, one line that really stuck with me was looking at things in the longer term. We've planted a crop that has a 100-year lifetime. So we've got a longer-term perspective than the next 10 years. But Chad says in his letter, "Decisions made in this update will influence how soon farm and rural lands are depleted and how soon the rate of growth will be forced to slow because there are no further areas in the county to expand into." So as someone who's been, is in the fourth generation farming, you know, it becomes an existential question, this next comprehensive plan and what tools we put in place to, if we want to have agriculture as any kind of viable economic activity in the county. So it's maybe editorializing here a little bit, but it's heartfelt.
Well, I just want to comment on that because I'm all in favor of Hazel, not Sue. You never mentioned that. You know, some of what we're talking around is we need Economic Development Plan. We need to have tools to attract businesses. I don't know what CREDC is doing for us in that regard. You know, we need to look at, well, can we conserve land for farming? Because, you know, we've lost a lot of agricultural land over the last couple decades, several decades, to development. You know, what are the tools beyond putting zoning on the map, the comprehensive plan, the other side of it? How do we achieve what we hope to achieve in that long-range plan? Because I think we do have a good vision on this council right now. So I'm very mindful of the things you just brought up, and I'm hoping we can discuss how we can not only put something that's really rationalized and intellectually pure on our map, but then how do we achieve it, whether it takes five years or 10 years or 20 years? I mean, there's commercial properties out there that have been there since the GMA, and they're still vacant. So that was my issue on being nimble. So, you know, maybe apples and oranges, but I think we need to have that conversation at some point.
Yes, councillors, I think this is Oliver again. I totally agree. We need to have that conversation. This is the reason why we are looking at an existing land use map and seeing where changes, if any, can be made. On agriculture, you know, you listen to some folks. They would tell you that ag is no longer viable. You listen to those that are farming. They would tell you that it is. All they need is the county's support. And that support may come in the form of infrastructure. It may come in the form from the state when it gets to issues on water rights. So there's so many angles that we can look at some of this. We have an Economic Development Chapter, which was put in place with the help of Columbia River Economic Development Council. We are going to be revisiting- We are going to be revisiting all of this as we begin this conversation for the next 20 years of our land use planning to, you know, consider what is it that we're going to do? What type of land use plan do we want to put in place? So we'll have that conversation. Councillor Su Maishul, I hear you. If you recall, historically speaking, maybe in 1993 or so, or four, the councillors at the time repealed the clustering in the resource area. And that repeal stood until 2016, when the councillors at the time decided to extend the clustering to resource, forest and ag 20 and forest resource area. So we can revisit that. If this current council wants to repeal that, that's going to be your call. Staff is not advocating that. What happens to the remainder? That remainder is supposed to be, you know, left as agricultural land in perpetuity until such a time, and I don't know the way that the rule is written now, until such a time when that area come into the urban growth boundary, then the land use may change. That is how the rule stands now. Those that are in the hinterland further farther away will remain with that clustering. You know, clustering is an innovative tool, allowing GMA. But, you know, there are some pros and cons about it, and we can talk about that as we begin the conversation on what to do next going forward. But I will be more than happy to begin that conversation with the council and the community. I agree with you. If we continue, there is a push, if I may, both on the rural side, those that don't want the urban growth boundary to come closer to them, don't want us to see the council continue to expand the urban growth boundary because the boundary of the county doesn't change. But we can change the boundary by expanding it to rural area. At some point, we have to think differently. You know, we are in a suburban environment beside the cities. When do we consider them building up? I don't know. But that's the conversation that the community might need to have going forward. But this, all this conversation we're going to have as we begin the conversation about what to do in this update. And this council will have their, what will I say? They will have their voice and their decision written all over it.
Chair, I've got a few questions.
Go ahead, councillor Yar.
I actually have many questions, but some of them I can wait because they might be addressed in future presentation here. One of the things that I was wondering about, first of all, I feel like this probably is likely the single most important thing that all of us will be doing in the next four years. So we get one shot at this, and we need to do our very best to make sure that we get this right. And there are so many things that are involved, and I appreciate all that you are already doing to get this process going forward. One of the things that I am curious about is there's so many mechanisms to this process. There are so many different things that are going to go into it. And I kind of feel like it would be beneficial for us as a council to have kind of a, like a workshop that would help direct our decisions and our discussions, maybe like a visioning? You know, what is important to us in our county? What do we feel needs to be changed? How does it need to get that way? Just kind of like a visionary process to where we look at each individual decision or each individual subject from, you know, holistic approach? I don't know if something like that could be done and whether... One of my concerns is that this is going to take so much time. This is going to take an incredible amount of time, both from our perspective here on the council as well as staff. One of the things that I was wondering also was, how are we dealing with this large influx of work? And are there tools at the state or resources that the state are giving us to kind of offset that time and expense? Are we able to hire, you know, independent consultants to help us with this process so that staff time is a little bit more freed up and not so consumed? That's one of my questions.
Yes, councillors, the state will be assisting us. They have staff at the state that provide technical assistance to local jurisdictions, and I have a good working relationship with them. Secondly, the state will be offering out some grant, which they have not yet opened up. When they do, I will apply for that grant and alert the council, I think I did already, which in the 2020-23 budget, the council approved in one of my decision package, that we will be receiving some funding from the state to help us in this effort. Yes, there will be an opportunity to hire a consultant. But what I have done in the past is come to the council when I think the time is right to hire a consultant. I am open to having a work session with the council or come to you at your request to have a broader conversation with you and lay out what of the, some of the major issues that we are going to be covering in this effort. Decisions that are made in the past that have been litigated, if I may add that. I don't think that the council want to reopen issues that have been already litigated and found to be compliance with the Growth Management Act. That's one. But I'm open to work with the council, come before you and have a broader conversation on this periodic review or update. There was a visioning effort that the community did maybe 20, 30 years ago. Some people have wanted to reopen that. We tried that in the 2016 effort, and the community decided that no, that vision is still, or the council at the time believed that that vision is still appropriate. And you councillors can read that on your own. It is the first chapter of the Comprehensive Plan document. That is the vision, is a 50-year vision of the county and known as the Community Framework Plan. Again, it is the first chapter of the current com plan. And each time we've gone through this process, it's been re-adopted. But I'm open to have a dialogue with the council. One of the major areas, as I mentioned, I believe it was in slide four. If you go back to slide four, it talks about housing. The legislature have passed a new rule. It no longer says encourage, it's kind of like required, to plan for housing, particularly addressing affordable housing from what they were calling income bands. Average median income of folks in Clark County, whether it's those that are making 50, you know, 50, 80, 100 AMI, so that we provide a variety of housing types and choices. So affordable housing issue is one that the state have elevated. And I'm not sure that they will provide us funding. The funding that they provided were limited to the cities. And if you recall, with the exception of the three new councillors, councillor Medvigie and councillor Bauman were here when I came to the council requesting funding to help us put the housing action and housing study and action plan together. We took that initiative to put that plan together, and the council is helping us to begin the implementation of those strategies in there. I don't think that will be good enough in terms of what the state requires. I will be constantly looking out for funding where the opportunity exists, and I will apply for it and let the council know ahead of time that I am, with your permission. But to answer your question, sir, there will be funding in the neighborhood of $700,000. It will not come in one chunk. It will come in phases through the state, you know, by fiscal year. The first $350,000 I'm going to apply for. When it gets to doing the environmental impact statement, that funding will go to pay for that because it costs between $300,000 to $400,000 to do an environmental impact statement on whatever preferred plan the council chooses. And the cities don't give me money. I come to the council and ask that the cities have submitted their plan to me, i.e. the county. We then become the lead agency to do the super work on the plans submitted by the cities. So that's where that book of the money will go. If it wouldn't be enough, I will come to the council to ask for additional funding. But I hope I'm answering your questions.
Yes, that is very helpful. I appreciate it. And I'm open to anything. This is the first time I'm going through this process. So anything that you feel will help us as councillors, I would appreciate you forwarding that information to us. I also was wanting to, and this might be unnecessary to remind you of, you may already be doing this. I'm not aware, but I just want to make sure that we are working very, very closely with our partners in this, especially with cities, our cities. And I don't know if we have a process where, because some of this stuff is going to be very similar, and some of the studying that needs to be done is going to be similar. So do we have ways to make sure that we're not doing the same thing over and paying for the same studies as the city? And working together, you know, perhaps they're doing something that we are doing, but they're different, whereas we could piggyback together on one contract, and it would be cheaper for both the city and the county? Things like that? Or is that taking place?
It is taking place. We're having conversations, let me put it this way. We're having conversations with our city partner. I meet with them now that we are beginning this process. I meet with them every month to share information, coordinate, and cooperate where we can. It's the same country. At the end of the day, the law requires that the cities and the counties' comprehensive or land use plan be internally consistent. So there are things that we are required to do as a county, and then there are things that the cities are doing, such as, you know, the Public Participation Plan. They're also reaching out to their council. Some of the cities who are, that are very, very small, one-man shop, they're also receiving grants from the state. Some of them will use their grant to hire help, professional help, to put their plans together. I know that the city of La Centre have hired a consultant. They shared that with me. I know the city of Vancouver is also hiring a consultant to help them. I'm not sure where the cities of Washugo, Barrow Ground, Carmers, and Richfield are, but I know that some of the cities will hire outside help. We have done this, when I say we, myself and our staff, I have very qualified staff. Where we need external help, I will reach out for external help.
Great. I appreciate those answers. And the two last things that I think that would be very helpful for myself as well as the community is, I don't know if there's a way, the two maps that we looked at at the beginning of the slideshow, is there any way that we could turn that into an interactive map so that people could go in and kind of be able to understand the zoning in our county? It'd be helpful for me. I know that for sure. And the second thing I'm wondering if we can do is have a, some sort of a calendar, I've not seen one yet, that kind of shows when, what processes will be done. And I know they're obviously subject to change, but I think that would be helpful for us and the public at every single presentation that we get on any part of the com plan, that we quickly review that calendar so that people can see where we're at and understand when things are coming up in the near future. And as soon as we have concrete dates for specific meetings, just getting things out there as soon as possible, I think is really important so that people can be a part of the process and so that we can better understand and work through this process. So those are my comments. You don't need to answer those right away. I appreciate it.
I appreciate that, councillor. And we are going to get into that. We have preliminary timelines and scope of work that we will share with you. And the map, we can work with our GIS staff. They do wonders, and they may have an opportunity to, you know, respond to your issue. But I know that the map online works very, very well. If you know your parcel serial number, you can enter that, and it will quickly tell you what your property is on. And then you can call us and let us know how we can help you, you know, navigate, you know, what you can do or cannot do based on the use list. So the map online is very, very good. I can say that those that have used it, relators and cities, they really like it. And that's all I can say. But the Public Participation Plan is one tool. The council will review that and approve it, and it has preliminary scope of work and timelines. And we're going to post this on our website and for the public to see what, when major decisions are going to be made. One of the areas that I'll be discussing with the council, as I indicated, changes in law since the last plan update. Those changes in law, we covered them when the director of the Growth Management Division at the state had the kickoff on January 19th. He did touch on those new laws that we have to share with the council and see how Clark County is going to, as part of this update, make sure that we are addressing them. Our legal counsel, Ms. Chris Cook, also touched on the new legislation that were passed. And I'm going to be expanding on that and having conversation with council on how that may impact what we do in the future. So if that's all the questions, then we can get into the Public Participation Plan, and I'll turn it over to Jackie Camp, unless other councillors ask questions.
Just one more clarifying thing. On the interactive map, I use the GIS system a lot. But even as somebody that uses it a lot, I'm not quite sure exactly how to use it to help me in this specific process. So if we can have the best system in the world, and if people don't know how to access it, or if it's not, you know, a simple thing, it won't be a useful tool. So that was just kind of what I was pointing out. That's it, I promise. Thank you.
Okay, well, I'll go ahead and get started with the next part of the presentation. Hello, everybody. My name is Jackie Camp. I'm a program manager with community planning. Oliver has been here, of course, since the beginning of Comprehensive Plan GMA. This is my third update. So I've been through a couple and experienced that. Today, we're going to talk about the Public Participation Plan. And essentially, this is kind of the first step of the update for council to make decisions on the timeline like Oliver talked about and the schedule. Before we get too far ahead of the council, we want to make sure we provide this proposal to you so you can give us feedback and that we're all on the same page as we move forward with this two-and-a-half-year project. Just a little intro before we get going. So we did post this draft of the public, this first draft of the Public Participation Plan on January 24th for a public review period, and we asked for comments to be submitted to us by February 8. Um, and we asked for comments to be submitted to us by February eighth. But we will, of course, as we move toward a hearing that we have scheduled with you on March twenty first, will of course receive any other um comments and input. But I just wanted to let you know today that the draft that we're going to talk about was the one that's been up up there for public review. Um, we are currently reviewing all the comments that we received and we hope to receive some more uh from council today um to inform our draft that will be prepared for the March twenty one hearing. And I'll talk a little bit more about the public comments here at the end. Um, so just wanted to give that kind of preview of of the plan for the comments and how we're going to um look at those for the next draft. Next slide. So the comprehensive plans, as Oliver mentioned, are long range policy guides. And they help jurisdictions plan to manage their growth and development and with respect to the natural environment and available resources like public facilities and services. So Washington State law, the G M A, um, and jurisdictions operating under the Growth Management Act uh develop and implement comprehensive plans and development regulations consistent with their respective comprehensive plans. So the Growth Management Act establishes a series of fourteen goals that should act as the basis for all comprehensive plans. And you can see them listed here with R C W that they come from. And as you see, I've I've put a box around one of those goals related to what we're talking about today, which is early and continuous public participation. Next slide. So the public participation plan provides members of the public opportunities for early and continuous participation and access to key decision making processes with the council, um, the planning commission and the planning commission. The plan describes the steps that Clark County will take to provide opportunities for public engagement as well as Clark County contact information and other web addresses and resources that will be provided. This plan is in addition to the public participation that we have required by our Clark County code sections related to uh land use change proposals. So the purpose of the plan is to identify the scope of the proposed update, identify when legislative action is expected and identify how the public can can participate or comment. Next slide. So for the uh twenty twenty five periodic update part, public participation plan, we have four goals um that we've drafted for the plan. Um, the first goal has to do with accessible participation. And this is um a way to seek to provide low barrier opportunities for all who wish to participate, to have a say in the decision making process. So this has to do with providing, you know, multiple ways to host meetings and events, both online and in person, um, ways to provide translation services as resources allow and translators at events. Our second goal has to do with inclusive participation. We recognize that policy and planning decisions about land use, transportation, environmental resources and capital facilities don't impact everyone in the same way. So we want to prioritize engagement with community members who have historically been left out of public planning processes such as renters, people living with disabilities, immigrants or refugees, the BIPOC led organizations, um, those that suffer with homelessness, with the hope that the resulting plan is well grounded in the experiences and knowledge of a wider range of public perspectives so then has historically been achieved. While we, the county staff does not have the power to enact policies or develop and regulations, but by incorporating a more diverse range of voices, we can provide a richer and fuller context to elected officials as they make those decisions. So as we've um already begun reaching out to community groups and organizations um that have not necessarily we've have participated or we know of have participated so that we can introduce our department to them and um talk about our work and the twenty twenty five update process to ask how they would like to participate and how we can assist with that engagement. So we are currently working on on that outreach. Goal three is meaningful participation. And it means that the county will provide enough background and educational opportunities about the project so that public participants have the information and tools that they need to be knowledgeable and informed about county processes, policies and regulations. So this has at least county will provide opportunities to listen to its constituents and hear about their experiences. There will be engagement opportunities will take place early in the project process. So there's time for discussion and learning to take place. Public feedback will be shared with our planning commission and county council for their decisions on specific topics. The fourth goal is transparency and accountability. Public engagement opportunities will distinguish between opportunities designed to provide information, so informational opportunities versus those that seek input and feedback on decision making. Opportunities will be clearly defined and advertised where the public can provide timely input so that there's opportunities to affect decisions. Staff will keep the project website updated with current information and use concise, plain and easy to understand language. There will be an ongoing record of comments along with an online mechanism to make this information available to the public. Being transparent and clear means the public can hold the county accountable in its process and decision making. So all these things we are working on currently to get ready. Next slide. The twenty twenty five update will be a countywide effort that endeavors to engage with a broad and inclusive range of stakeholders and communities, including the cities, tribes, residents, neighborhood and community groups, cultural organizations, business stakeholders, advocacy organizations and other public and private agencies. We will engage with multiple stakeholders, including the following kind of more general list cap of categories here. And as I mentioned, um, although these are more general categories, we are keeping a detailed list of groups and we're receiving um feedback from the public on additional groups so that we have a robust list of organizations um that we are reaching out to with contact information. So that will be ongoing. So we, although the public participation plan will have more generic general categories, we are keeping a more detailed list for outreach. Next slide. So community planning will use a variety of outreach and engagement tools um to uh tailor to the needs and opportunities for each phase of the project. So um, the document provides more details on how each of these will be used. Um, but they are out listed here on this slide. Next slide. So part of the public participation plan um includes the preliminary timeline for the project or the scope of work. And to help organize the very complex process of updating the plan, we divided um essential elements of the projects into four phases. Each phase will have distinct tasks and activities that are planned to engage community members and key stakeholders in identifying issues, developing policy concepts and shaping the final recommended plan that will be considered by the county council in twenty five, twenty twenty five. The estimated completion dates for each step are indeed estimates, so we want to make, keep that in mind. I mean, and in some cases, final action may occur before, after target dates because of resources, need for additional intergovernmental collaboration or unforeseen circumstances. But we did our best to kind of give a preliminary kind of uh dates of range of dates for each of these phases. And we'll keep firming them up and providing those updates every time we come to council and the planning commission and the public. Next slide. So this uh graphic just uh shows the those four phases that I mentioned. And um and I'll go through kind of each of those briefly to give an overview of what in each phase includes. But um right now we're in phase one, what we're calling project initiation. Um, and this will continue throughout this year. Phase two uh will be in next, you start next year, early, the beginning of next year with shaping at the plan as we're calling it. Uh, phase three will be reviewing and refining the plan and the final phase of adoption. Next slide. So phase one or the project initiation phase, objectives include raising awareness and providing information about the plan and engagement process. So we've begun, beginning to do that, um establishing the preliminary scope of work and the public participation plan. We will be researching issues, state law, planning requirements, as Oliver had mentioned. We are, we'll be coordinating with the cities, town, tribe, public agencies on the population, housing and employment projections. And we will also be coordinating with our cities and our town and tribe on countywide planning policies. So those are policies in the comprehensive plan that all the cities and town um coordinate on um and we each share within our comprehensive plans. Next slide. So in the public participation plan, you will see how the the, all the phase, each phase and the objectives that I'll cover. And then this uh, each one has a table uh like this that provides um an estimated period when certain key milestones and those engagement opportunities um are available. So I'm not going to go through this. These are all in the public participation plan, but wanted to share kind of the organization of how it is in the P P P. Next slide. So phase two, uh shaping the plan. Objectives include collecting individual property owner proposals for comprehensive plan amendments, uh providing information to the public on the scope of anticipated environmental impact statements. So uh as Oliver mentioned, that the E I S, um which will seek input on growth strategy alternatives, impacts and mitigations. We will seek out input on proposed new and revised policies for the plan. And we will continue our coordination with city, the cities, town, tribe, federal, state and local public agencies. Next slide. And here, as mentioned before, is kind of the timeline, estimated timeline for those key milestones in phase two and the um associated engagement opportunities for those milestones. Next slide. Phase three, uh we're calling review and refine. So the objectives for this phase include the publishing of our draft environmental impact statement. We will be uh publishing the the draft comprehensive plan document with updated information for public, public review and comment. The selection of the preferred alternative will occur during this phase. Once that preferred alternative or the the growth plan is selected, there'll be an analysis of that alternative with updates of the urban and rural capacity estimates, the capital facilities plan, the capital facilities financial plan and transportation analysis. All the work that goes into um completing your update process. And then that preferred alternative is studied in the final environmental impact statement. Next slide. Again, the uh timeline or estimated timeline for the key milestones and engagement opportunities for phase three. And again, all these will be, are in the public participation plan. And we will, of course, um also provide them on the webpage um in a clear way. Next slide. Last phase is would be, will be phase four, the adoption process. So the, you know, the major objectives for this, um, we're required to submit the plan to the Washington State Department of Commerce for uh their sixty day review. Um, that's for all land use proposals, um, including the comprehensive plan update. We will have review and recommendation by the plan by the planning commission. So there will be multiple work sessions and hearings with the planning commission. And then review and adoption of the plan by the county council on or before June thirtieth, twenty twenty five, when it is due. Next slide. And lastly, for this phase, the key milestones and estimated time and engagement opportunities for those. Next slide. We added this um information also in the public participation plan um to provide information on the roles and responsibilities of decision makers um so that people can understand how how those roles and responsibilities are implemented. So we have, of course, the county manager, the planning commission role, county council role, and then the city and town councils. Next slide. So as I mentioned, when I first started, uh, the draft public participation plan was made available on January twenty fourth. And we've received a lot of great feedback um from the public. Um, we also propose these two questions if people, for for consideration by the public to garner any additional information regarding organization or groups that we should engage with or if there's other tools that we should use. So we've got, we got some feedback on those questions as well as just more general feedback that people wanted to provide to us. So we are currently reviewing all the comments and making revisions to the draft plan for the mark, for preparations for your March twenty first hearing. Um, we'll have that draft posted no later than March sixth uh for public review. And of course, we'll, you know, take in any comments and and just have that discussion with council at the hearing on the twenty first. Um, but we're getting a lot of great feedback. Um, and we'll have, you see all the comments that we've received so far, at least up to February eighth, that we posted today for the work session. We will also have a um a comment summary table that will show all the comments that we received and how we considered them and how they either made an effective change in the public participation plan or the reasoning behind it. So that will be in addition to your uh hearing packet for for that date for March twenty one. Um, let's see. Next slide. So this um just gives the anticipated next steps um for this year. So uh we had the public comment period for the public participation plan we're talking about today. Today, we're having our work session with council. We have a scheduled hearing for you to uh review and hopefully approve the public participation plan on March twenty first. And March and April, we will start conversations with the planning commission and council on population projections and probably more information on the housing uh requirements that are new under G M A. Um, the summer, we're looking at information to discuss on the employment projection. So that comes after that population number is chosen. And then the fall will be um conversations and discussions and hearings on countywide planning policies and population allocation. So that's uh deciding with the, your city partners on, you know, where the population wants, what that overall number is chosen, where that population growth is going to the urban growth areas. So more to come on that. So that is all I have. Uh, go ahead, head into the next slide, which is just our generic thank you and happy to hear any comments or answer any questions.
Adam Cher.
That's her maybe.
Thank you. I'm happy to start. So um, one of the real big challenges we have uh is communication with the public. I think that is the biggest challenge and you you've identified pretty much all the stakeholders. But individual property owners, some of them are pretty unsophisticated or don't have resources or missed out on past opportunities to subdivide, cluster. They don't know how to pursue individual changes um when they've been left behind from the eighties. You know, I I am really reluctant and resistant, um, going back to councillor Young's comment earlier, to hiring consultants. I don't like consultants generally. Uh, I think it's pretty rare that they're actually value added for the money we spend on them. But when it comes to communicating a social network, um, you know, we've discussed this before. And we get solicitations all the time from all the organizations that do this professionally uh to create webpages, interactive and otherwise, to communicate with all our neighborhoods, all our individual property owners. Um, that's something I really would like to look at. I mean, we've been challenged. I mean, we've been challenged as a council to answer all of our constituent emails. A lot of them get missed, a lot of them get funneled into our junk and we never even see them. Social networking is a, is a big challenging. I don't do that. And I don't think the county does it well. So, you know, reaching out to our individual property owners to say, hey, here's now the time to solve your property dilemma. What are your comments? I think that gap between your office, which I deeply respect, you and Oliver, you and Jackie and Jose, I mean, I think you have a lot of capacity, but the relationship between you and the individual property owners, when we have over 500,000 citizens here is, is the biggest challenge we have. And added to that, and going back to the 179th, which is a great example. People are transient. We have people that will be moving to this county during this process and miss Phase One. So I, I think that's our biggest challenge. I would like to see a plan on, on the mechanism for communicating with the public throughout this process because I agree absolutely. I think every counselor here recognizes this is hard. And it's also the most important work we're going to do over the next few years. And communicating and getting that interaction with the public is vital to making this a success, to communicating the vision that the county already has and very few people know about. So anyway, what have we already started looking into? What media platform that we may expand on or hire as a consultant?
Well, I can start and Oliver, you can jump in. But I, I totally agree. It's, it's a big challenge to do outreach to 500,000 people, right? We are, and I'll say that we're getting great feedback from the public, from our questions that we posed for the public participation plan. And we're, we're, we're working on better networks and partnering with organization and groups to hopefully help with that outreach. For example, you know, you had public health earlier, but public health does a lot of outreach to groups and has had a lot of experience and can, and you're our Department of Community Services. So we're talking with them on, you know, other ways that they're getting information out or groups that we should connect with to help spread the word. Also, our youth, we're connecting with our, you had the youth commission. And we're going to try to connect better with the school districts to reach those families. And we got great feedback on, you know, reaching out to farmers and, and those that work and live in the rural areas. So I think a lot of it is going to be those, not necessarily social networks, but like the actual social networks, who you know and who you talk to in your normal, everyday life to help raise awareness of this project so that we can at least let people know what's, that it's happening and to funnel them to, you know, the county's website or to our department so that we can provide information and be accessible for people, for, for us to come out to your groups, to your organizations, to your neighborhoods, to talk about this project and give you the information that you need so that people understand how it impacts them. I think that's our, our, one of our big challenges to get, so people understand what the comprehensive plan is and how it can impact them in their day to day.
Jackie, you covered it very well. I have nothing to, to add. It is a challenge and we are trying and trying to use every tools in our toolbox to look at different ways we can reach folks. And we also provide a mechanism whereby they can submit to us their contact information. And anytime there is a meeting coming up, I think, I, I don't want to exaggerate, but we have more than 1,500 folks that have signed up and are continuing to sign up. We call it our mess list and we will continue to use that mess list and blast out anytime there is a hearing, anytime there is opportunity for them to pay attention to what we are doing. You know, we will continue to look ways. We are available to go out to NAC, we are available to go out to any organization that or communities that invite us to come out. We make ourselves available to, to be out there to provide information. Decisions are not made ahead of time. We want the folks to know that the council is listening and reading their comments. And we will continue to provide opportunity for folks to comment and participate. And every comment submitted to us that is in our possession, we create an index of record so that when they search that index of record, they will find that their comment is in there. If we don't receive it, it will not be in there. And we're encouraging folks to submit that. There are so many ways that we've been trying to reach out to folks, encouraging them to, to participate. And my staff, myself, and particularly my staff, we are making ourselves available to any organization, any folks that want us to come talk to them, from the building industry to neighborhood, to any organization, we are making ourselves available to property owners, you know, come meet with us. I'm always, my door is open and my staff and I, we are ready to meet with any property owners, to guide them, to help them through the process. Particularly as it come to land use here in Clark County. We don't do the day-to-day permitting, but I know that April and her staff are doing excellent job reaching out to folks. Some areas we are going to look at, which often come up is when we notify folks. And I have made that very clear to April and others that we will take another hard look, whether it's management decision or come before council, because some of these are written in our code that we can come to the council and through the county manager modify our code to see how we can reach out to a large number of folks rather than the 300 and 500 feet radius that is in our code. So there's so many ways we can improve our public notice. You know, some of these are written is by state law. Notice 15 days prior to your hearing. If the council wants to change that, that's going to be your call. But we will make the necessary changes, even, even if we can start with making changes on the 300. If you're in the urban area is 300 feet radius. If you're in the rural area is 500 foot radius. We can start with making that, even if it's 1,000. There will still be folk that will tell you they didn't know, they didn't hear. But we are available and we will continue to make changes and find different innovative ways to reach out to property owners.
Chair.
As Counselor, was that Marshall?
Yes, it is. Thank you. I would just like to thank you, Jackie, for all the work you've put into this. I think the goals that you've come up with in the timeline and the succinctness is all very good. Just a few, and I would just like to say, I think this early, very first phase of public participation is so important because it helps to frame what the issues are. And I would hope that, you know, you know, we, we go out in an open, open way, that we're not presenting a lot of what a plan might be, but that we're collecting their, their, their visions and their ideas. And to get an understanding of really, well, how are things going in your community? What are your concerns? So that there's an openness and the information that you're gathering. And then we could look at patterns and, and begin to frame up what some of those issues are. So I think that's critically important. And then as far as BIPOC community and diverse engagement, I think that the usual methods are not likely to reach those folks in a meaningful way. And I think if there can be some peer-to-peer outreach of groups, and I believe with some of the COVID outreach, that we actually hired some people from the BIPOC community to can, to, to engage those communities. And I do think that the education part of it, how does this plan really affect your day-to-day life? Because in fact, it, it does, you know, whether or not they have a sidewalk, whether there's a nearby grocery store, the condition of the roads, there's just a lot of data. Understanding things from a real practical sense and less jargon-y would be most important. And you know, stakeholder groups, I think stakeholder groups are great. I've seen though what happens sometimes with stakeholder groups and it's everybody who's lobbying for their positions and their heels get dug in. And I don't know if we've ever done this before, but I'll just toss this out, that it might be worthwhile at some points in this process to bring in a mediator to see if there is the ability to find some common ground. Because with land use, it's, it's all about conflict. And if there's, if we can break out of some of that conflict, that would be a wonderful thing to do. I'm glad, Oliver, that you mentioned notice because it's come up, not just in the context of comp planning, but a lot of permitting and especially in the rural areas. Sometimes 500 feet, you're only still just kept getting a very few people. So I'd be very interested in expanding some of the notice to, to capture more people involved with it. So I'm really heartened though with the reaction and the feedback you've gotten so far. I think it's, it's really great. Yeah, so let's see, what else did I want to say here? Oh, I wanted to make a mention about the neighborhood associations. I think neighborhood associations are not, don't cover the whole geographic area. Some of them, I know my neighborhood association, Fairground, is very much in flux right now. And, you know, there's a whole lot of things that are going on in that community. So I think that supporting, bolstering that system, but then also looking outside of that system, just to any kind of a community gathering. And I do think that face-to-face direct communication in the communities can be really effective in bolstering all of this. And partnering with the cities, I think, with some of that outreach could be, be very good too. That, that might be all for now.
More later, right? I just have one quick comment and that deals with something that follows this process here. And what is the expectation of the public after having participated in the public participation plan? You've done a marvelous job of the planning effort for planning. And this is one of the most comprehensive efforts that one could imagine at not just planning, but planning for the plan. And so it is a huge, absolutely huge endeavor. So the question in some public's eyes becomes, after they have participated, then what is the response? And is that response going to be that the plan will reflect their input? Well, you know, sometimes it will and sometimes it won't. And that is a subject that is very difficult for some people to understand when they're passionate about what their input has been. So I think that that kind of honesty in discussion of what happens after the plan in terms of incorporating feedback from everyone needs to be addressed. And you know, the feedback doesn't come with, if the issue is A, that you've got feedback from B and feedback from C and that's it. You've also got from D and from E and, and they all differ. And one of the things as a counselor that I find really very challenging is in reading input from the public, integrating it effectively when it is from so many points of view, so many different points of view that really don't agree with each other. And that is just a tiny glimpse of what will come from this process because this process is so huge. Not huge just in the content per se, but in the planning process per se. So what lies ahead after receiving the input will again be a big, big challenge. And we're, you know, the council is there to work with you on that. And we, we just hope that the public is understanding why it doesn't mean that every input will be incorporated ultimately. Unfortunately, perhaps, but that's the way it has to be because of the magnitude. Are there other comments from council?
Chair, I've got a few comments.
Go ahead, Counselor Young.
So the one thing I would say, and I don't know what this means, but here we are talking about a public participation plan. And we have an empty meeting room. And from the looks of it, potentially eight citizens signed on, listening to the meeting currently. So this is, it's such a challenge, it really is. And there is no silver bullet on this. There's just no way that we can reach everyone. But I really do appreciate the extraneous efforts that are being made to, to reach people and to think out of the box in terms of how we're able to do that. Just a couple of suggestions that I would have, and I don't expect any response whatsoever, but one of the things that I think would be helpful is a lot of people, even though, you know, I live in Vancouver jurisdiction, even though the comp plan from Vancouver will affect me, so will the county. But generally speaking, the jurisdiction that you live in, that will be more impactful. And there are so many people that are unaware that their address may say Vancouver, but they are actually in county jurisdiction. And so this might be something that you work with the different cities on as well, that some sort of a mechanism to inform people to make sure that they're actually engaging with the correct jurisdiction. And then Oliver, you had, you had spoken earlier about how we're capturing email addresses. I, I actually just last night went to our website and I individually signed up for the information to be given to me on the comp plan. But I think it would be helpful if, when people sign up on the comp, you know, just in general, the comp plan, they may end up with a lot of emails. So I think it might be worth looking into creating subcategories of what people are interested in, whether it's the transportation part of things, the zoning, you know, the housing, that whatever may interest them so that they're only getting emails for information that they're interested in. I would love to look at, I really thoroughly enjoyed our joint meeting with the Commission on Aging last week that we held. And I think that joint board and commission meetings with the council would potentially be a productive use of our time. And let's see. And that's it. Thank you very much. I appreciate the, the presentation and the conversation and looking forward to it.
Thank you, Counselor. And are there other comments or questions?
I, I have a, a comment. I, I echo what Counselor Young said about communicating out to the community. I can't remember if it was mentioned by Jackie or Oliver earlier, but posting it in the Reflector, the Colombian, Clark County Today, to get the word out, and the Messenger, which is another magazine that older people read that's not digitized. is another magazine that older people read that's not digitized, I think that would be really great too, just as, as much communication as, as people can receive. I've been talking to a lot of community members in District Two recently about different things that are going on, and, and that is really a big concern, like, why did we just not hear about it until now? And, but, you know, like was mentioned, an, an empty meeting room, and maybe even social media, Facebook, Instagram. I'm not sure if the county participates in much of that, but I think that would be useful way to get the word out as well. So just my two cents. That's it for me.
Thank you, and other comments or questions? Well, I believe that we have, for lack of further questions, reached the end of the presentation. Is that correct, Oliver?
Yes, that's all we have today, and we are looking forward to the hearing with the council in March. We will also share this information with the planning commission. They will not be having a hearing on it. Only the council can hear this and adopt it, and then we'll go from there and continue to follow the, the public participation plan. So I look forward to the hearing and additional comments that will come in, and we will share that with our council. So thank you very much. That's all we have.
Thank you. You have given us plenty of food for thought. Thank you so much. We are going to take a five-minute break, which will take us to 11:24 before we reconvene for council time. So we will see you then at 11:24.